What I said is this shouldn't be site-specific, and I'll give you an example. When you're doing a text amendment, I think you and I mostly are on the same page because you're, you're, you're pretty smart. When you do a text amendment, it doesn't apply to a single site. It applies to the entire zone, or the overlay zone in this case, which is called mud. The text amendment and the information you need to gather would be the effects from the text amendment. So in other words, we can't be so, in other words, down to, we're not talking about just one site with two-hundred-and-forty units. We're talking about wherever this text amendment could apply in the future and what effects it would have on the residents of Portland. We're not specifically talking about one site, and I understand Brian's point of, well, we need to at least have that information, and he's a hundred percent accurate. But in all fairness, this study has to show what the text amendment, the ramifications could be throughout the town. This is not a single, everybody wants to put on tunnel vision and pretend this is an isolated spot, and this is the only thing that could ever occur by doing this change. Simply not true. When doing a text amendment, it's a blanket. It applies to all the properties that meet the criteria. So the study that we're going to pay for, in my opinion, would need to have all the information for then an educated board, such as the Planning and Zoning Commission, to make their decision based on facts. Do you understand where I was going?
Can I just clarify that this is a proposal that came in at four o'clock, three o'clock this afternoon. We haven't even read it. I think it needs to be read, it needs to be reviewed. I'm gonna put it on a future agenda. We're not reaching a conclusion because we haven't read it yet. So, my purpose tonight was under communications and correspondence, and I appreciate EDC's analysis of, of why we're looking at this, and we'll put it on a future agenda. And with that, I'll open it up for public comment. Is there any public comment tonight? Okay. We'll move on to old business, letter A, tax suspense list. You reviewed this at our previous meeting. We've put it back on the agenda. I have not heard from any selectmen in terms of any changes to the proposed suspense list. And as you will recall, just because something is on a suspense list does not mean that we don't still collect it, and we have and we hopefully will. However, it is an analysis of what is owed to the town and a realistic rendering of what we don't feel is easily collected. So that's what this suspense list is. It is not taken off the rolls, it is simply suspended. And then when it is paid back, excuse me, would be, would be paid to the town. Is there a motion to approve the proposed suspense fiscal year two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen list? Second. Moved by Brian, seconded by Kathy. Any further discussion?
Only just, just one thing, Sue.
Yeah.
That, that amount, as I recall, is not much change from last, a pretty constant number, right? But the total number isn't dramatically different.
Honestly, I'm not remembering last year. I don't think it is. Tom, do you have any comment to that?
About the same. I'm assuming it's about the same because based on the number of miles that we're planning to discuss, because then we're all including and including returns on home.
Okay.
So I think that, that takes away my one question, so that the, even though we're suspending it, in other words, the mailings would then stop, but if they're coming back anyway, I guess that isn't working?
They're still collectible.
Correct.
Is that a word? Collect?
Yeah, something like that, okay.
Collect? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any extensions? Motion carries. I believe we have at least one appointment to the senior center advisory board, Kathy.
Yeah, I'd like to nominate Geraldine Williams, twenty-one, ten on the floor, to fill the vacancy on the senior citizens advisory board.
Second.
Did you get that, Sharon?
Okay.
Geraldine Williams, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed, any extensions? Are there any other appointments for this evening? If they're being done, we're gonna move on to new business. We heard a presentation tonight on the draft ordinance prohibiting the storage, disposal, or use of fracking waste. The selectmen can discuss this again tonight and can also set a public hearing date, which is part of the procedure for any ordinance adoption. So I'll open it up to the selectmen.
Just have a question.
Sure.
Could I ask Andy?
Yes.
I understand the intention of this also is to kind of build a groundswell support at the local level against the unknowns and all the fracking waste. The feds haven't stepped up and changed the laws that will clarify what's in there. The state has kind of punted a little bit. Is it your belief that within the next couple of years, the federal government will step in and correct this, and will that then override any ordinance that's done? Or if the state will jump in, like, if you, if you could predict, based on your experience with the feds and the state, how this will roll out, what do you think will happen?
I, I don't, I don't, yeah. I'll, I'll, let's see how short I can make this. I don't see how the, I'll start from the top down. I don't see how federal exemptions that have been in place for six decades
Have gone.
are going away. I just, I don't see that. You mentioned a groundswell. I'd like for that to happen. I would like to think that would have an effect on the DEEP. I have a lot of respect for the DEEP. I understand, as I, as, when I responded to Fred's question earlier, I, I thoroughly understand the, the regulatory nature of those bodies and, and how they have to make rules. So I don't think they can exhibit the same flexibility that a municipality can and just say, hey, we're pretty sure this is bad stuff, we don't want it. That's what I got.
Thank you.
Is there an interest by this board to set a public hearing?
I think so.
Do you wanna do it May, excuse me, June one, or June fifteen? Those are our next two meetings.
June one.
June one?
June.
Seven o'clock, good?
Good.
Okay.
Could I just ask Andy one question?
There's a motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Kathy, for the town, public hearing to be June one at seven o'clock here in the Mary Florida. Ben.
Andy, are you aware, you mentioned the road building. Am I missing something? Like, is it in asphalt that you're aware of, or is it, are we talking like a sub base? And I'm not gonna hold you, Andy, I'm just curious. When you, when you mentioned the road, I get the spreading on the road with de-icing. Is there another product that I'm missing in my head or no? Other than fill?
Yeah, I, I, I don't know, I can't specifically answer your question. I could try to find out for you. But I think it's of the nature of fill and that, that type of use.
Okay. I was, I didn't know if you knew of like asphalt being made with this product now, or something to that.
As far as I know, asphalt, no. That's my best educated guess.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And thank you, Andy, for the fine presentation, as well as the other members of the task force.
Thank you for hearing us out.
Yeah.
Okay, there's a motion been made and seconded?
I have some comments.
Okay, not done yet.
Since I do have the comments, I just wanted to.
Yes.
And going back, I, I think, I think certainly the task force has a lot of passion for this issue. Where I, I'm coming from is, I kinda look at it from a, from a different position, from a couple of positions, I guess. One, I was thinking, this kind of falls into the NIMBY category, the not-in-my-back-air category. Clearly, no one in town would want, you know, fracking waste to come in, and it'd be, if it, if for some reason it did, that'd be a tremendous outcry and nothing, and they wouldn't be allowed. And I think that's true anywhere in the state, actually. So I say, okay, well, do we really need this? And it certainly sends a message that, that it does. And so that's, that's where I'm coming from. But I also wore a hat as economic development chairman for a while. And one of the things I always tried to think of was try to promote a kind of an image of the town being business-friendly. We want certainly economic development, we talk about it all the time, we want to see appropriate business come in and our brand, our tax list enhanced. But is there a danger? Are we gonna dampen, I'm, I'm thinking? Do we dampen that image by being one of the few towns in the state? Because I don't think there are very many that have the ordinance that say, okay, Portland, I'm gonna go down into the, I've got a plastic business, I'm coming down into the industrial park, or etc. Or a business, that happens to be a water-dependent business. But will a town project an image that it doesn't have to project as not being business-friendly? So that, that comes, that, that popped into my head, too. And that's, I guess, what my, one of my objections, or it's not objection, concern. If it were to go into place, the ordinance, it probably will. Is a town really gonna be fundamentally changed? I don't think so, because I don't think it's, my mind, I don't see it as a problem. And I see, and I also see the state having in place still a moratorium, which will probably be, and a good chance something will be extended with that. So that, that's where I, I guess I'm coming from. I, I just, you know, it, it's a, a position that I normally wouldn't be taking, but as I thought about it, and I, I looked at it, and I said, well, is this really the best thing for the town? So I just wanted to share with you what, what my thoughts are. And the other thing, in terms of, I, I just wanna make sure, too, if we have a public hearing, that the ordinance is, you know, is a good ordinance, is gonna do what it should, and I had some questions about that. One of them being the contract language, whether we should embed contract provisions into, into our town ordinance. I don't think we have any other, I looked quickly at part of it, and I didn't see any language that incorporated that, you know. That could be done as a policy, certainly. I mean, the town could have a policy saying, this is what we're gonna do. But I don't know whether, whether it should be the ordinance, frankly. So I just wanted to share, so you'd know where I was, where I was coming from on the issue.
Fred, I'm sorry, were you asking for some responses, or you just wanted to?
I, I, no, I just wanted, if you wanna respond, please do. But I just wanted you to be, you know, to, I wanted to be upfront
Sure.
and tell you where I was coming from, what my thoughts were, and my, and how I arrived where I am.
Um, you, well, your point about NIMBYism, you know, I'm not gonna dodge that, but I will say that this is a task force endeavor, and over the life of the tax, of, of, of the task force, through our collective efforts, we've saved residents over a million dollars. Solarize, HES. We've led the state in many areas of clean energy and energy efficiency, so I'm okay with just saying no for, for an effort, which is essentially what we're doing. But I, I think we have, to be blunt, I think we've earned the right to do that. In terms of supporting businesses, I will say that, again, speaking as a task force chair, if you wanna invest and get returns on your money, you wanna invest in renewables, there, that's where the money is. That's, you know, that's where you're saving lots of money. And then to your last point, I, I'm sorry, could you just remind me again for your last point about the, if we wanna put this into the contract language in New York?
Into the ordinance.
Yeah. Let me just gently remind you that the ordinance comes from, you know, established counties in, in New York. And I'm not sure if I mentioned this earlier, but the, the folks who pushed for these ordinances in New York counties, if I understand correctly, were the public works departments. Because those are the folks who are really involved in handling this type of stuff, and they wanted protection from, from their municipalities and, and counties.
Fred, to respond to that, you know, it's all about balance, you know, how I feel about these things to me. You're, you're concerned about sending a message. I have no trouble sending a message that the town of Portland is not interested in storing or having any of this material here, if it's going to cause harm to its citizens. And, and that's where I would come from. I don't know, as a practical matter, whether it's ever going to be an issue or not. I don't think it hurts to file the, to pass the ordinance. I don't really know where things would, in Portland, we always lose sight of this, talking about development, but there's only so much that could be developed in the town of Portland. There's only so many resources, and I don't know that that's ever gonna come to fruition anyways, but I'd rather err on the safe side.
Kathy? Yes, yes. Andy, when, I'm assuming you're gonna make another presentation on June first?
I would love to.
Okay. I, I think that would help everyone to better understand. But would you be willing to address how the regulatory review board of the DEEP functions insofar as how they take their vote?
Sure.
Like you said, yea and nay?
Yeah. I, I can, I'll find the details for that. If you'd like, I can send them to Michelle, and she can forward, I'd be happy to
Yes, okay.
give you that stuff.
Yeah, thank you.
And also, I meant to say this earlier, but the notes that I prepared, I'd be happy to send those to you as well. They contain links to all of my research, including a, a shortened version for each slide that I showed you. So if you wanna check up what ProPublica said about the wastewater treatment in McKeesport, Pennsylvania, you're feel free, feel free to follow those links. I know you get a lot, a ton of information, but...
Is it on your webpage for your committee?
It's not on, not on the webpage, but again, this is something I can send to Michelle as a PDF, the links will work, and then you guys will get it, and you can follow it up.
Dave could put it on the website.
Yeah.
I probably saw Dave's, his, his presentation.
Uh, thank you. My pleasure.
All in favor of the public hearing?
Aye.
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 Any opposed, any extensions? Motion carries unanimously. The next item is setting the mill rate for fiscal year two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen, which we are required to do by the charter, the town charter. And if you want to take a minute and find that in your packets. A little background here. In terms of the state revenues, as you know, this board reduced revenues an additional two-hundred thousand, and you reduced expenditures, an additional two-hundred thousand, from your last workshop. And in doing so, that was presented to the voters, and the voters approved the expenditure budget. And as we learned, the state of Connecticut and the governor and the legislature passed a budget, and it's approximately, I wanna say, give or take about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, that our revenues have been reduced by the approved budget. And if I'm wrong there, Tom will tell me. I have, but I believe that's about correct. I can't hear you, Tom. Do you have the exact figure, and if you do, I'll repeat it. So, when we look at the revenues and expenditures and determination is made, what is necessary for the mill rate increase? It is not zero-point-three-two, but rather is zero-point-one-seven. And the other reason that the mill rate becomes zero-point-one-seven, and if I don't explain this correctly, I'll repeat it. You know that when the legislature was meeting, they were saying that any town that accepted the municipal revenue-sharing agreement monies, the MERSA money, had to not charge any more than thirty-two-point-zero-zero mills for motor vehicles. And based on the two thousand fifteen, fiscal year fifteen budget, if the municipality had a mill rate that was over thirty-two, or thereabouts, they, the legislature, was gonna reimburse the town for lost revenue. Now, at the time, the town's mill rate was not over thirty-two, because we're just slightly over thirty-two. So we were not scheduled to get anything specific. Well, when they met again to discuss the budget and passed the budget, they passed a budget, and they passed a law that didn't set the mill rate at thirty-two, but rather they set it at thirty-seven. So setting it at thirty-seven, if your mill rate did not exceed, no, let me say that again. You cannot charge more than thirty-seven mills on motor vehicles, not thirty-two. And by the legislature doing that, and the governor signing that, they don't have to reimburse as many towns as much money as they would have if it were thirty-two mills. So that was all part of the balancing act as far as the budget is concerned. So, as we had predicted what the mill rate would be to the best of our abilities, we had predicted there would have been perhaps two mill rates, based on state law. However, the state law is now not thirty-two mills, but the thirty-seven mills. So, the zero-point-one-seven mill increase reflects all properties, motor vehicles and non-motor vehicles. So the mill rate that will work with the adopted expenditure budget would be thirty-two-point-five-one, not thirty-two-point-six-fifth, which is what had been reviewed as the potential previously. So therefore, whereas the two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen budget for the town of Portland estimates that four million, seven-hundred-twenty-thousand-one-hundred-fifty-five dollars will be received from the state of Connecticut. And without this, the mill rate would be thirty-eight-point-four-four mills, not factoring in the state's mill rate cap on motor vehicles of thirty-seven mills. Now therefore, be it resolved that the mill rate for the fiscal year two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen be and is hereby set at thirty-two-point-five-one. So, just one last repeat, the mill rate increase is less than what we had predicted it would be. We had predicted it would be zero-point-three-two, it will be zero-point-one-seven, based on the adopted budget. Is there a motion to approve?
No.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Brian, discussion.
Does this mill rate, take into consideration the, as we've estimated, two-hundred thousand dollars?
Yes, it's still...
Is it still that same two-hundred thousand dollars, yet we'll probably get fifty thousand dollars?
In revenue.
In revenue.
But your expenditures is what was approved
Right.
at the referendum.
Okay, that's all right, okay.
Yeah. But you are, you are predicted
Right.
'cause sometimes the, the, the state will change what they give us in the course of the year, but the prediction at this point is not two-hundred thousand less than, than what the governor had said in February, but rather a hundred and fifty, thereabouts. I don't have the exact number. But the, remember, the expenditure budget is what was, what was approved. And if we get more revenue, that's even better, but at this point, that's what numbers are telling. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any extensions? Motion carries unanimously. The next is also required by town charter. And every year, we look at the pay plan for non-union administrative pay plan for the, for the fiscal year two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen. And I think Michelle included for you some reference materials, so that you have an idea of previous years. Excuse me. I believe she put in two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen, two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen, and two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen. Do you have those? That's what I have in my notes here. Those may have been from my records, I don't know what...
Yeah.
Is that correct, Kathy? Fifteen, sixteen? And I brought with me others in case you had questions.
What would the category highway, non-union maintainer, wouldn't our union contractor have that?
I believe that was
Aye, aye.
whenever we have someone who has to come back and do some work for us, and they're not employed by us. I think we had the need for someone to come back at one point, and that was the thing that we had set up.
Just, I don't think you...
Like if someone retired?
I apologize, I don't think, highway, non-union maintainer.
If you see a man that you see come back and help with the contract.
Like retired persons.
Is that in, is that in conflict with our union contract? Like, is, is, I'm new to this.
It was an isolated incident back three years ago, where a fellow retired, so on, so on, uh, anticipated, he never, he anticipated, he was sure it was a bad one, but he didn't really, he's out of consciousness.
Okay.
He never, he never...
The answer, the answer is 'cause people who, I had a gentleman tell me that he can't hear our answers, so I will repeat the answers. And that is, there was, on one occasion, about three years ago, an individual who returned to do a specific job for a period of time, and with consultation of the union, we agreed that this pay would be available for a non-union on a very temporary basis. It was a specific need that we had at that particular time.
So, so just to be clear, the only time this would be applicable is if the union agreed to it?
Oh, yeah.
It just, it jumped out at me when I saw that.
Right. Good question.
If nobody else has questions, I got a couple more.
Sure.
And obviously, this is my first year studying this. When we put a, a minimum-maximum, I guess that, in my head, that makes sense for, when hiring, I can see that being the case. But like it, from my standpoint now, I kinda wanna see where people are as far as pay, and then obviously, if they're entitled to a two- or three-percent increase, it would be spelled out, so we're all on the same page. Instead of, like, as of now, I, I really can't tell a lot from this sheet, other than, hey, we got a broad range. And to me, I have trouble voting, voting on something where I, I just can't see where we, and I, you know, I'm not trying to pick on pay or anything like that, I just, if we're, if we're voting on an actual, hey, well, it should be the pay plan, in my, in my opinion, but if somebody has an answer to why we do this, other than, I do understand in a hiring practice, you want ranges, people are more qualified or worth more, that sort of thing, I get it. But I just...
The, the pay plan has been set up this way for several years. We used to have steps for some of these jobs, particularly the parks and rec youth services, and some of the hourly, part-time. We eliminated that in terms, so that's on page one, on page two, on the backside. For the professional employees, there is a range there, and that is something that this board wanted, as opposed to having the steps, we, which we eliminated. So when we advertise positions, we cannot advertise anything other than the pay plan. So that is why there is a range, because some of our employees may have been with us for many, many years. They will, I don't think any of them... Tom, are any of these at their actual salaries, the maximums? Or are there a couple hun...
The maximums are, what says the board most to the people who are hired?
So as a range, it's, it's slight, it's above quite a bit for some positions, and just a slight amount for the more, perhaps some of the more senior positions, but it's, it's what this board had wanted in terms of a range, 'cause...
I guess I'll just make my question a little more clear, where I'm, where I'm trying to get a whole handle on this. So if there is a range, and I, I'm not gonna pick out a, a title or, but I will pick out a dollar amount, so we can have a discussion. Say somebody's well, well within the range of, you know, say, I'll make numbers up, sixty to ninety, and they're currently being paid seventy, or whatever, and they're entitled to their raise, I get all that. Is there any chance at any point, without this commission authorizing it, could somebody could somebody get an increase within that range?
The budget is set based on, for example, we'll look at the professional employees, youth services, senior services, parks and recreation director, executive secretary and so forth. You approve a budget, so within the budget of any particular department, there is a line item associated with the salary. So, within the office and...
But do they, from that line item, it's usually lumped in with a few other things? Or is it just salaries?
Salary would be, salary would be separate.
Okay.
I brought the budget with me.
But I'll give you an example, like, in some departments, wouldn't it also include a couple people or multiple people, and if somebody was then... Yeah, and if then somebody was eliminated or we did a half-year position...
Yep.
Theoretically, with an approved budget, could you then give the balance to that employee with, yeah? I just, I, I like clarity, I like everybody knowing where we stand, I, you know...
You're asking, what are you asking? You're asking for what salaries everybody makes? I can give that to you.
That's easy to get.
Yeah, I'd be happy to do that.
No, the point would be, we should be, if we're going to approve a, a thing titled, you know, the pay plan, I think it should be the pay plan, I get the range when hiring and I fully count for that.
As I said, this is what this board has asked for, so...
Right, I'm new to it, I'm just bringing this up as an outsider looking in. It's, the clarity seems to be better when, when we know what we're voting on.
If you would like to have these specific salaries of each employee, I would have brought that, I didn't know that you wanted that, you could have, we have gotten that before. Yeah, I'd be happy to give that to you.
And I don't think there's a major issue, but then we have a better handle on, well, if there was some sort of increase that, other than what we've discussed, the percentage or this or that, we would know.
You would know when...
As of now, we don't have a document in front of us.
Well, you will know when you look at, you can ask me and I'll tell you. There's no secrets, it's what...
No, but I don't, I also don't...
Be happy to give it to you.
Do we have to approve this tonight, or can we wait till the next time?
What would you, what, what would you like?
I would just like to, to, if we're going to vote on this, we should vote on what it is, not a range.
You don't want a range?
I, I personally don't, but I'm, I'm one of many here.
We gotta, we gotta have a range.
So, if I could just, let me just ask a quick question, just because I'm also new to the board as well, to this board. So, on the other side, on the Board of Ed budget, there was, there would be a contract that would come up every two years for each one...
It's not a contract.
No, I understand that, I understand that, but the contract laid out, you know, what the raises were and all that kind of stuff. So, I understand Ben's question, like, with an employee that's not under the contract, what's the mechanism by which they're reviewed and given salaries? So, it may not be connected at all, but if there's a range, let's say it goes from a dollar to a billion, what's the mechanism by which the employees are, you know, reviewed as well as given raises? And how does it relate to us doing the budget? Because that, because that would be, is that...
I did share with you...
Did I say it in smaller...
And you and I are heightened to this.
I did share it with you, the...
And I just don't know.
The Board of Ed issued.
The increase...
Because they have it together on the Board of Ed.
They do now.
The in... The increases, I did provide that to you, because I thought you may be interested in that. So, let's see, fiscal year fifteen, sixteen, a two percent increase for employees. Fiscal year fourteen, fifteen, a one-point-seven-five percent increase. For fiscal year thirteen, fourteen, a zero percent increase. For this next year, within this budget, it's based on, typically, it's based on what, what is received by the majority or the, whatever union contract may have been approved. The police are getting a two-and-a-half percent, so that is what is reflected in your budget that you approved. And again, we, we could have, I don't remember us talking about this during the budget season, but that is certainly the time when we can cut things, and that's what's in your budget that you approved.
I'm not trying to cut.
And I just want to point out that if you don't have a range, if you don't have a minimum and a maximum, if someone were to leave, you would only be able to give them one salary, which the current person has, because that's the only pay that you would have approved. So, that's why, one thing, there's a reason.
Susan, I was wondering, to Ben's point, when he talked about if someone left and then in that department, there was extra monies. So, can someone else in that department then have a pay raise? It's not, you don't appropriate it that way.
I, 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 I'm the one that would be signing off on things, and typically, we do that at July, because these employees do not get step increases as the union employees do in January. That's done in July. If someone were to leave and they are of a caliber, or I should say, of a level of a director, this board has to approve a public works director, the planning director. You have to approve, I believe, the building official, and there's others too. So, you would be approving those, those positions when people are hired.
And if you wonder where my line of questioning comes from, I apologize, it's a bit, uh, kitchen. When, when we were on the Board of Ed, there was a substantial increase given to a, a person and it was then taken back and it became very controversial. And I don't want this board to ever get itself into that scenario when things are spelled out and clear. It's very simple, I'm not trying to fight anybody's raises, I want to make sure we're all clear here and this is not...
What are, I don't know exactly what you're asking for. Are you asking for me to report to you every time? I don't, I don't, but I don't understand, are you not trusting me? Are you saying that I'm going to give somebody some huge raise or something? What are you asking me? I don't understand.
No, I'm just asking for clarity on this paper, that's what we started off by saying.
Minimum and maximum, but you, you said something about...
No, I said, I didn't say minimum, I said, get rid of the minimum and maximum, put down what they actually made. That was it for clarity.
But this is for the yearly raises, you need, and you do need to have that so that if someone does leave, you might go back to the, the minimum amount of money. You don't want, say, it goes forty to sixty and that person's getting fifty thousand, okay? We don't want to have to pay the next person fifty, we might want to pay him forty. Or if they have more qualifications, we could go up to sixty, that's all.
I would argue, when we're ready to hire, I think this board has the legal right to put the pay at whatever it feels at that time, this is more for people that work...
But we needed these guidelines because of the budget, too.
The pay plan is what this board's authority is. That's not something this board made up, it's in the charter. Your authority is to approve a pay plan.
The other question, the other question I had was this. How do these numbers match up with other municipalities, other towns of our size and nature?
Connecticut Conference of Municipalities publishes a survey every year. I'd be happy to share that with you, I don't have that information tonight.
So, just some, another, another municipality or two that are about our same size. Could you provide us with that information?
I could probably provide you with the whole, I think there's a disk or there's a link that you could look at.
Okay, perfect, that'd be great, thanks.
And, and I can tell you what people are making now and what they would be making July one, provided they're, they're still employed, I mean, obviously, if someone's not employed or someone asked. Do, are you asking for that? I'd be happy to give it to you, that's what...
The only, the only thing I would like, I would like to know is how, just how we line up with other municipalities.
Sure.
I, I don't need to know individual pays.
See, my, my take on it is, when I look at this document every year, if a mistake was ever made, and I think Tom does a wonderful job with numbers, but it would be very difficult for any one of us to pick up on any error when we don't have a true number for comparison. That was my point.
An error?
Correct, for example, if, if a two percent or two-and-a-half percent increase is approved, and no big deal, that's what it should be. Having said that, without the document directly in front of us showing the breakdown of every person, it would make it easier other than going through a budget and trying to figure out if it's one or two salaries in the...
Let me ask this board, do you want specific salaries in your pay plan? Is that what you're asking for?
If it may...
I'm asking the board.
I could careless.
No, I'm, I'm fine without that, just understanding how the procedure works, like with non-union on the Board of Ed side, that's all I really need to know. I mean, I'm sure that supervisors and the various people along the way judge and do it the way they do it, and I'm not questioning that.
But I can tell you, Mike, that, that the positions that are on here, particularly those positions that are the professional positions, if there's a two-and-a-half percent raise, when we put together the budget, we have a spreadsheet, we'll make that available to you. It shows you where that person is for fiscal year sixteen and then where they would be for fiscal year seventeen. There's not five percent for one person, a zero percent for another person, a two, it's two-and-a-half percent if that's what's adopted, it's zero, if it's zero. And it has been zero several times, not just this one time that was on here, so...
So, the process above the normal rates, it would, we would be aware of it? I think that, to answer Mike, is that what you're saying, Susan?
Yeah.
Okay.
I have one other question.
That helps me.
Ground maintenance crew leader, three-sixty-two, is that over and above the workers' rate?
That's Carl's position.
Oh, Carl.
And because he provides supervision to our employees and he's not in our union, that's a stipended amount that was negotiated by the board, several boards before us, that's what that is.
I was just going to get your minimum wage, I was just checking. Thank you.
You know what, I need to get a drink of water, because I'm really thirsty, so...
Take over, deputy.
Is the, is the Bobcat for Rick, just general, is it done for Rick? If it's, oh, okay, if it was for you, I was going to cut it in half, it's a half a Bobcat. But, all right, somebody else...
Can you tell you? So, Rick.
I just don't understand the principle, I don't know why we would pay somebody else's obligation.
I, I get it, you issue...
Tom, I saw you approaching the podium, did you want to point out anything else?
Yeah, just, just want to say from the, this is where you do approve of the non-union wages. You know, we put up in front of you tonight a two-and-a-half percent, this is where you approve them. The minimum and the maximums are there for the administrative professionals areas, because those are more professional positions that may go in and out, as well as the people that have specific contracts, we utilize the employment agreement. The, our payroll action forms are generated by our, of our human resource department. They are approved by the department heads and, and as well as Ms. Bransfield, as the chief executive officer. Often, I'm my, I am involved in many of those as well. Those are what we utilize to give to the payroll department, and that's how payroll is orchestrated and generated. So, utilizing this payroll action plan is very important to us as a guide when we're doing our work during the year. Again, we refer back to our payroll action form from the prior year to know where people were individually and then utilize this two-and-a-half percent guide to push it forward, and that's what we do and enforce people to only go into what was approved. So, I think that's, I think the main crux is, this is the, a very important guide for the human resources department, the payroll department, the finance department, to know what the guidelines are of the positions. People, we don't, people don't have contracts, like in the Board of Ed, that's not, they don't have that, so that you can't go and look at a contract, there is no such thing. So, this is the guide, this is how people are hired. Then, human resources prepares and generates that, it gets reviewed by multiple parties. No one's just individually one signed off. That then therefore goes to payroll and is utilized as the payroll, as the source document, so that payroll is not setting the rate. So, it's a very good, strong control, it's a nice internal control procedure. The board here sets the rates, we follow the rates, that goes to human resources. Human resources gives that to the administrators, administrators review it, flows back to human resources, goes to payroll. It's worked very well for numerous years, we've had numerous clean audits this way. I, I, I mean, it's a good way to go.
Silly question, Tom, it's not in the, I know it's in the charter, but I, I don't see the Board of Selectmen, should they be on here, it doesn't really matter.
You're in the charter.
Right. So, I'll take care of it.
Yes. Thank you.
A little adoption resolution.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Extentions? The next item is also per our charter. A lot of these things are done post the approval of the budget by the, by the town referendum, and that is the adoption of, quote, other budgets. And the reason we have to wait until we have the budget approved is that there are transfers made to many of these various budgets that you have in front of you, and they include animal control fund for a hundred-and-ten-thousand-six-hundred-fifty-five dollars, the town aid road fund for two-hundred-and-thirty-nine-thousand-eight-hundred-sixty-seven dollars, the youth services fund for a hundred-and-ninety-seven-thousand-one-hundred-forty-two dollars, the resource recovery fund for three-hundred-and-fifty-two-thousand-one-hundred-twenty-eight dollars, the building maintenance fund for the town side of eighty-thousand dollars, and the parks and recreation fund for three-hundred-and-sixty-seven-thousand-five-hundred-ninety-five dollars. And further resolved that the capital improvement budget for the fiscal year twenty-sixteen, twenty-seventeen is outlined on the attached in the amount of seven-hundred-eighty-four-thousand-nine-hundred-twenty-nine dollars, with three-hundred-and-three-thousand-one-hundred dollars being town source funded projects, a hundred-and-fifteen-thousand dollars water source fund projects, and one-hundred-and-fifteen-thousand-dollar sewer source fund projects, and two-hundred-four-thousand-seven-hundred-twenty-nine-dollar state of Connecticut funded projects, and forty-seven-thousand-one-hundred dollars of other source funded projects be and is hereby adopted. And all of the budgets, as you approved them during the budget season and as it had gone to referendum, are attached. These budgets are not specifically approved at referendum, but rather, any transfers that go into these budgets is approved. That's why this board has to approve these budgets. You also approve water and sewer budgets, which you did at the beginning of May, if I'm mistaken.
Good morning.
Second by Kathy, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions?
Standing.
One extension. Kitchen. There were no noes, is that correct? The next item is resolution, fourth quarter transfers, Board of Education School Lunch Fund. And Philip O'Reilly is here, welcome, Philip.
Thank you, good evening. This is an annual event. I was here before you, at a similar time, time of the month last year for, to ask for these transfers to be made. The Board of Education on May third approved their resolution to make the recommendation for these transfers. The first one is our school lunch fund, and this is budgeted money. I'm not asking you to approve any additional money. This is simply to move from our, our Board of Education budget to our school lunch account. The second of the two is our annual maintenance request, up to a hundred-thousand dollars, if such funds exist. As you know, we have significant challenges in our buildings and we are doing a good job. I think the Board of Ed, as you've heard me say, has done a really great job to address some of the issues, particularly at Brownstone. Last year, you did approve this transfer. We were able to move forward with one of the two major bathroom project, projects at Brownstone. It looks marvelous, we'd like to do the second one. And the second project you approved last year, or what we, the, the second project that we use the funds for was the asbestos abatement project at Brownstone. that we use the funds for was, was the asbestos abatement project at Giltersleeve School. So these are annual, uh, requests that the Board of Education moves forward to you for your approval. And so I ask if you have any questions to, uh, send them my way.
Are there any questions, Philip?
I'm the Bobcat, so we're transferring.
No, that's not... Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's not mine, but I have to say that he's one of the most valuable players that I have, so...
He has a nice smile, too. Okay, so, um, school, fourth quarter transfers, Board of Education School Lunch Fund. Is there a motion?
I'd like to make...
I'm sorry? Kitsch?
Yes.
Second by Mike? Discussion, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries. And then we have a resolution for the Board of Education for various repair projects that Dr. O'Reilly pointed out that may be included, a painting at various schools, railing improvements at the Brownstone Intermediate School, and flooring projects. And it's a transfer of no more than a hundred thousand dollars to the Board of Education Maintenance Fund from the available fiscal year twenty sixteen Board of Education appropriations. So this would be moved from the Board of Education funds to the Maintenance Fund. And whenever these funds occur, they have to be done at this point as opposed to the Board of Education. So that's why they're done at this point. Is there a motion?
I'd like to make that one.
Mike, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Kathy. Discussion? I just wanna say, I agree with you, Philip. I think the Board of Ed has been doing a great job. Um, and I also wanna say that I think, Tom, as our finance director and your finance team work together so well, um, that you've done a tremendous job in making improvements, um, with the dollars that are made available to you. And I wanna thank you.
I would agree with you. Tom has been exceptional, especially in light of the fact that I've lost my business manager in the key. So, uh, as, as my new one is moving, as we're moving into place and we're learning the road, so to speak, Tom and Ed may prevent...
Any further discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries. Thank you very much for coming tonight, Philip. Good to see you. Okay, the next item is fourth quarter transfer of, um, replacement of Bobcat. And I don't know whether Tom or Carl wanna make a comment on this. Why don't I read it while, um, they're thinking? Whereas the current Bobcat utilized in the grounds division in the summer and winter needs to be replaced, being a frontline piece of equipment purchased in the year two thousand and two, it has passed its useful life. And whereas new equipment, Bobcat Tool Cat five, six, one, zero, G series that performs efficiently is dependable and will allow the employees to safely complete their tasks as needed, now therefore be resolved with the Board of Selectmen hereby elects to move sixty-six thousand, five hundred dollars from contingency, with the number listed there, to the ground maintenance department, which is equipment purchases with the number given there, in an amount totaling sixty-six thousand, five hundred dollars. Tom, did you wanna make comment to this on the fiscal matter? Carl, did you wanna say anything about the equipment and the need for it?
Um, current Bobcat that we have...
Could you kindly use the microphone? It's, it's important. Thank you, Carl.
The current machine being replaced, um, is rusted very bad. We've had, we've spent a lot of money. It's not dependable anymore. Um, thank God we had a late winter this year. That clears all of our sidewalks, school sidewalks, town buildings, as well as other pieces of sidewalk all over town that, um, we own. So with that, we have several attachments that will fit the new machine and the new, new Bobcat on. We've gone to a different style machine that was not made when ours was originally purchased. This is, I'm sure most of you know what a Bobcat or skid steer is. This thing's a little different than that. We, we'll be able to use this on athletic fields. Um, we can take it on to the lawn areas and stuff without doing damage. Um, long-term, we also have two tractors with three-point hitch capabilities for many tools that we use, overseaters, aerators, uh, power rakes for working on fields as well as any kind of landscaping work that we do. This type machine also has a three-point hitch capability. Going forward down the road, I probably in time would eliminate, I have two tractors with three-point hitches, probably as we replace, we get rid of two and replace one because this one would be a dual-purpose machine, using it year-round more so than the other machine was.
Questions for Carl?
I guess my one question was, so are we gonna be selling the old one on the auction or are we keeping that as a backup machine? That was my question.
Selling it on the auction.
So if we're getting rid of the Bobcat?
Huh?
To get rid of the...
We're gonna get rid of the, the old Bobcat.
No.
It's, 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 yeah, it's too much money to keep fixing it.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, questions?
No, sorry, you made your point.
Brian. Second by Kathy. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tom? We have no refund of excess payments tonight, so we'll move on to status and committee reports. I wanna talk about the long-range capital planning under number eleven. Um, so that'll be committee report.
Yeah, public comments, Susan.
Yeah, public comment is next.
Place anybody who...
Yep. Okay, who am I?
I'm, I'm with you.
Andy? Are you saying you wanna speak or you're all set?
Do you guys agree?
Thank you, sir. Um, so we'll move on to number eleven. And I wanted to review with the selectmen a very good meeting that the Long Range Capital Improvement Commission had. And I don't remember at this point who the liaison is from. It's going to be... So there may be a need for a liaison from this board. I did attend the first meeting. I don't know that they've established more dates as of yet. But, um, I wanna highlight for you the discussion on the department's long-range capital needs. It's by no means exhaustive. There were, um, very good discussion. The chairman of Parks and Recreation, Ralph Zampano, reviewed the plans for the Route Seventeen Recreational Complex in particular. And, um, he pointed out that the, the plan is to develop a park for use by residents of all ages. The park entrance is designed to mitigate speeding on Strickland Street. The town currently uses two fields that are leased, which is the YMCA soccer field and the Tomaso Field on Airline Avenue. The soccer fields behind the town garage are privately owned by Oakwood Soccer at Glastonbury, not owned by the town. The cost estimate to build the Route Seventeen complex as presented is five point five million dollars. Mr. Zampano discussed the condition of the town's fields and parks and referred to the park study that had been done by LADA associates a few years back. Mr. Zampano discussed work that has recently been done on the basketball courts on Main Street near the Brownstone School. Agalotti Field is currently undergoing renovations. Carl is overseeing. Minimal, minimal improvements are made at YMCA and Tomaso Fields because they are not owned by us. Nolan Field has had an irrigation system installed. Bransfield Park has had the infield worked on along with horseshoe pits and the community garden. Chairman Agalotti pointed out that irrigation needs to be installed in all of the town fields. And there was a discussion that followed concerning all of the neighborhood parks and fields. And it was pointed out that there are many needs for many improvements at all of the existing town parks and fields. The consensus of the commission is that the town should make an annual allocation for additional upgrades at all existing parks. Maintenance is constant and must be addressed constantly in the budgeted out locations. Mr. Kelsey, Director Public Works, addressed the commission. The Board of Selectmen has established a goal of identifying and addressing the town's infrastructure and its need for capital improvements. Tye and Bond is currently conducting a capital improvement study of our water and sewer departments. The study is being funded by a fifty thousand dollar grant from the Metropolitan District Commission. The study is nearly complete and it will provide information that will be used to determine if the town wants to or would be invited to become a member of the MDC. The town needs highway maintenance equipment, sidewalk improvements, road reconstruction. Five buildings need removing. And these items will be discussed at a future Board of Selectmen's meeting because Rick Kelsey and our town engineer are reviewing these things. I've asked them to proceed to prepare, um, a work list as well as a cost estimate of the needed infrastructure improvements. Mr. Kelsey is expecting that, um, he would be directed to do this. I went ahead and did that. And, um, he will be providing an estimate of the cost. And in turn, this Board of Selectmen will review the potential for a bond authorization for those kinds of works. A financial advisor needs to be selected for the town. And the financial advisor will provide a financial plan for the ins, infrastructure improvements, including those that were discussed at the meeting, which would be the parks as well as the Route Seventeen Park and all of the infrastructure improvements that Rick Kelsey had pointed out. It's a tremendous amount of work that has been done and that is being done. And it will be brought forward to you for your consideration in terms of a bond authorization question that you can place on the ballot in the House. And, um, as some of the members that were here last term will recall, um, we had decided that at a minimum we would be asking for the Route Seventeen project. And we also identified a lot back in August that we would also be looking at our needed improvements for the town's infrastructure, sidewalks, roads, buildings, and so forth. So I wanted to bring that to your attention. These minutes are filed, um, and I'll open it up for any further discussion or specifics. Parks and Rec Commission Chairman is here, members are here, and Rick is here, too.
Rick, I have a question for you. Um, I know you're working on the various things that are needed for the town and all that kinda stuff. How quickly do you think you can get together the list of improvements? And are you gonna be prioritizing them in terms of must-haves to, we should-haves to townless? And how are you, how are you doing it? If you could walk me through timelines?
Well, specifically, uh...
I know there's a lot...
When we talk about a bond referendum, which is what I thought we were talking about partially, um, I was directed by the first selectman to look specifically at two things. One was sidewalk, an overall sidewalk improvement plan, and the other was a reconstruction of Brownstone Avenue. So that, there's two separate things that I'm doing. I've, I've given, in the, this year's budget, uh, I gave, put forward a request for other improvements that totaled significant amounts of money. None of it was really funded, but, so, so to try to answer your question twofold, as far as a bond referendum goes, I've been directed to look at sidewalks. And I have started looking at sidewalks, and it's a question I'm glad you asked because I was gonna ask it, is, uh, the sidewalks I'm looking at, we've discussed these before, are the ones in proximity to walking distance for the schools, with the exception, tell me where, unless you want, with the exception of those within the state right-of-way. So if you want me to look at those, I will also look at those. I need direction. There's a lot of work to do to do this. Brownstone, the other project which I've just started on, which is gonna take considerable time, is to actually look at reconstructing Brownstone Avenue, which is the road next to our Riverfront Park, Brownstone Acceleration Park, a road that's subject to collapsing and holes developing and one thing or another. That will be a major project. That will be three or four million dollars. The sidewalk project, I would guess, would be well in excess of a million if you, depending on what you folks want. So I've been asking for some type of direction as to what do you want? The other projects, go ahead.
Was it three to four million? I didn't follow you there.
Reconstruction of Brownstone Avenue would be a significant project. The other, the other infrastructure that I was hopeful we'd have a report on back in January is such things as, there's four condensing units up on this roof. I can guarantee you when the temperature gets up to about ninety, two of them are gonna fail. And your air conditioning will not work in two or three zones. The cost to replace those conditioning units just as a matter of, would be about ninety thousand dollars. You know, the roofs we're talking about, um, fire company, two hundred grand. And I could, you know, this was all put in a request for, in my request for this year's budget and equipment needs. So I went through all the items with the long-range capital. I'd be happy to share what my long-range capital request for, for this year would...
Rick, on, on timetable, I didn't catch that. What, what, when are you gonna be able to...
Be the same timetable? I'm shooting, I'm, I'm assuming or I'm, I'm maybe incorrectly that if you go to bond in November, that...
Yeah, so I'm...
Probably would go to bond for any number of things. And I think Philip's probably got the Giltersleeve School entrance coming up, too. That's a big number. So I don't know how you plan to do your bond. If, if, if and/or you plan to do a bond referendum, I'm assuming would be putting some things on the table.
So you're gonna have to have that done in a fairly timely way in order...
I'm planning to, on September.
Yeah, the sidewalk issue that unfortunately, uh, Carl passed on us and, and Ryan is the clerk, so it's just Susan and I at this point, but...
I, I would, again, there's a lot of work to do and I need direction. I don't have any...
Okay, so maybe we could, uh, get, I'll get some figures to you. I'll talk to a few of the other people on the board. And, uh... Any volunteers for that?
I mean, all I really need from you folks is what ones do you want me to do? I've already started a list. And like I say, I, I believe in your last report that I read that you, the subcommittee met, you indicated that you would, you had prioritized, as I indicated, those sidewalks enclosed, in, within walking, required walking distance of the streets.
That is correct, yeah.
I didn't include Main Street. I need, I need advice. If you want me to include that, put that in.
The only, the only other comment I'd make on that is that we've done, you know, with the sidewalks, as you know, we've done zero other than this few small repairs. We've, the only, we've done one foot by, by the town hall when, when precision concrete came, came in to give a demonstration in terms of taking care of sidewalks. I know you may have done some, but as you look around, I, I see that the allocations of towns, granted, they have more resources than us, but they have a place, a plan in place because we have a really responsibility for infrastructure, both sidewalks and the roads. And we gotta deal with it. And I'm glad that you're gonna come, come in with, uh, a capital. And I certainly would support, um, capital expenditure by myself. I'm the one person on the board because we have some dire needs.
What also comes with this now is you'll, it's the same issue we're talking about on Main Street parking areas. You presently have an ordinance that says the property owner is responsible for the upkeep, the maintenance, the construction, and the, the snow removal and all that. You do, you take on a sidewalk project and you take 'em on, you now take on things that may, maybe or maybe not you have responsibility for. So that's been discussed here before, too.
Yeah.
So it all comes into play.
If I can, if I can just clarify, too, so...
Sure.
Um, so from what I understand, what I'm understanding, I found a million bucks for sidewalks.
I'm just...
It's just, it's just a kinda number out there, right?
Over a million.
Three to four million plus, three to four for Brownstone.
In excess of three, for sure.
And you've also produced, um, kind of a, a list of priorities for the Long Range Capital Committee.
I, I produced them quite honestly for your, this year's long-range capital budget.
Um, because I, because I'd love to, has that been made available? I'm not sure if I've seen that list.
Well, if you go in your budget within the five-year plan, I believe while we refund Rick's request, the requests are spread out over five years. That's the way the five-year capital plan.
The problem you have is some of these roofs and furnaces aren't gonna anywhere near go five years. They're gonna fail soon.
I, I think the reason I ask that is, is it would help me, I mean, I'm just, I'm looking for one second.
Absolutely.
It would help me to understand because the way I look at the town, like you have, you have the quality of life thing. town, like you have, you have the quality of life things, like the parks and all the things that go with that. You have the, the buildings and the roads and the boring parts of the town-
The boring stuff.
That have to be done, right? Just as important. Um, but understanding what the priorities are, what roof is ready to cave in, what thing is, is the whole bit-
Stop in, I, it's all, it's all there and-
But understanding, understanding that and those to get-
I got it. It's all, it was all, I'll, I'll get, stop in anytime. I'll give you an explanation of what I presented. Uh, it's all in writing. It's all, it was all given to the-
Mike, to give, give a quick study after, you can then go speak directly, Rick. Within the five-year capital plan, for example, in building maintenance, we have carpeting and planning development, install transfer switch emergency generator, library carpet replacement, replace condensing units at the library, which Rick just pointed out, library painting, library entrance doors, roof at Fire Company Three, um, underground propane tank replacement, roof at Fire Company One, which is put out four years out, um, windows at various locations, overhead doors, roof at Highway Garage, which is put out for next year, municipal parking lot improvements, which is every year, masonry repairs townwide, replace furnaces, and so forth and so on. So it is in the five-year plan, as Rick has pointed out, um, some of this-
You asked for priorities.
Would have been preferable to be done this year, but we don't have the money.
There were a number of priorities. Zero, zero, there was zero funding, zero.
Right.
There was four hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars requested by me.
Which is why we're looking at-
There was zero, zero funded, there was-
The potential-
Zero funded last year also in long-range capital. So for two years, there has been zero funding in long-range capital, zero. You can only go so, and we're digging a hole. I mean, we're digging a big hole, and you're gonna-
Which is why you need to look at-
Come in anytime. I'd be happy to share my thoughts.
Absolutely.
Ken, you did stop. Thank you very much.
He didn't kick me out too quickly.
No, I, I'll talk all day. You don't wanna hear.
Thank you, Rick.
Thank you. Susan, can I just talk for a second?
Yes, yes, you were brought up.
I just wanna make sure that everyone understands, um, when we were talking long, long-range capital, you know, uh, Mike Agalotti brought up the, uh, master plan that we had in two thousand and six, and what I pointed out to him was that, that was a, a plan that tried to encompass really building out every park across the whole town at a very high level, and given the situation happened with the economy, there was a big downturn, obviously, between now and then. So what we've kind of done is tried to look at the things that really were necessary to keep those parks viable. So that's the same thing we're looking at from this standpoint now, is, you know, what we talked about at that meeting was, the idea was, you know what, you do this park, you're still gonna have these fields that may be needing some maintenance. So, um, you know, our goal is to try to prepare those items, and some of them, you know, might be lower priority, but we'll identify the costs that might be associated with it, but certainly, like irrigation is certainly critical, and we'd like to get irrigation in some of these fields because ultimately what makes it a challenge for Carl to keep them in shape. If you don't have water, it's very hard when you're trying to regrow grass. So our, our plan is to try to put together another list to go with the town park that just identifies the key things we think we would have to fund in order to make sure those parks went forward without issue. Um, the only thing that I would point out, you know, I, I have, I have the referendum question done, ready to go, and I could certainly put Rick's items in there, put commas and add 'em and change the amount.
We can do that.
Um, our concern is obviously, we know other groups may be coming to the table, and I, I guess, I was hoping you would speak what might be the direction of how we play it out from here to late August, because ultimately, late August is when that referendum's gonna have to be decided because it, that's the amount of time to get it in. So that's what I was hoping here.
Does the board have some thoughts on how you'd like to proceed or what you would like us to do in terms of reaching a conclusion?
I think we have to have a subcommittee of the board, um, who would sit down and spend a little time and try to prioritize and just, you know, what, where are we going, where are we gonna spend, uh, you know, because otherwise, the clock is running, we're not gonna, we're not gonna know what we're doing. So at least if we do that, we can come back with a recommendation and-
Do you wanna form a committee on this topic? It would work in conjunction with long-range capital. Um, that is a, there is a member missing. There is a need for a member, and I mentioned that to you, Mike.
We're working on that right now.
Good.
We should have someone available, so.
Because there are four members, and we need one more. So that would be helpful.
Can I ask you a question? Do, do we actually need a committee, or could we have a meeting or two with the board and just sit down and go through it and take care of it?
I, I would prefer just a new panel.
Do you do that? When do they, do you know?
They have not established their dates, Kathy, but we can invite them to our meeting.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we can have a joint meeting with Long Range Capital, and if there's not an interest in a separate committee, it could be a committee of seven, um, on the topic.
I, I like that idea. The only other, is there, do we have a projected number on our, um, city water, uh, city sewer infrastructure needs over?
It's coming, yeah.
Oh, okay.
There's a draft of it.
The number for the board, which has identified, when is it due now? Around four hundred thousand dollars of immediate needs, which they say immediate needs, code violations, et cetera, et cetera. In the next one to five years, five million dollars.
In the next five to ten years, another three or four, a total of, a total, this is preliminary, a total of, and those needs numbers are gonna go up. If I'm not mistaken, in the next fifteen years, you've got around twelve million dollars' worth of improvements that need to be made to your water and sewer systems. Thank you.
I just wanted a question. Like regarding rebuilding the road, the Brownstone Avenue, is that something, um, say, we wanna put it on the referendum, but then can we possibly get a state grant or some sort of state grant? I mean, we could apply. I, I know it's a lot, but, yes.
I mean, we applied for Spring Street where we had the road blown out.
Yeah.
Didn't get it. That's a big, and steep grants, if I'm not mistaken, are, are limited to five hundred thousand. So you got a three million dollar project, and you're gonna get five, if you're lucky.
Yeah.
And the only reason I picked that is, I mean, there's been lengthy discussions here by this board of stopping chip sealing and going to road reconstruction and all that, and I spoke with Susan, and I said, there's any number of roads you could pick. I picked Brownstone because it's an area where you're focusing on your Parks and Recreation and all of the other things. It's probably the most complicated road you could even dream of doing. The right-of-way is everywhere. You got voids. I don't even, Jeff and I looked at it and are scratching our heads. It's gonna be a major, so again, I'm starting, you're all set with your referendum. You've got a plan and everything to go. I'm just starting. So there's a lot of work to do, and so I, that's why I need your direction. If you don't, if you don't wanna do that road, somebody tell me, please, because there's gonna be a lot of time and money spent. And as far as sidewalks go, I need input soon if I'm gonna put it together for you.
Mike?
Ken, I, I'd like to make a suggestion, um, 'cause the way I look at it is, there's a couple of things we can do. I mean, there's a lot of urgency with the park, right? Because they've worked real hard on that. It was purchased for the, for that purpose years ago, and that's almost at the finish line in terms of what they wanna do. But I understand the need of other things. I mean, there's other needs at other parks that have to get done. Uh, we had talked down at the Riverfront about possibly, you know, some access to the water. I mean, there's a lot of things. I think it's really important right now to come up with a list of high-impact projects that could be included in either a bigger bond, or maybe it's a Parks Plus bond and, um, you know, infrastructure bond, whatever, however it's gonna lay out, I think there's to be a real push to get those priorities.
Let me know what you'd like to do.
Whether it's sidewalks, whether it's streets, whether it's, it's buildings.
You gotta tell me.
I think, but I think that has to be done quickly because, um, there's a lot of things that have come together in town. We've got the Airline Trail coming into town, right? That's gonna be here. We've got a lot of other good things that are happening. We're talking about the park. I think all of that, to me, says we need to get this clear investment in the town, both for, um, use of the town parks as well as getting our streets and sidewalks and whatnot in order. So I'd be a big fan of kinda looking at all of that and prioritizing, but we have to do it quickly though. I mean, November's gonna be here. In two weeks, it's gonna seem like. So if we need to do a special meeting, we need to speed things up-
Yeah, I'm gonna-
And get everyone together, I think we need to do that as quick as possible because, you know, Rick, you know what you need at your end. Uh, Tom knows what we can afford or can't afford. Uh, Airline Trail folks, everyone knows what they need, but we need to get these people together and do it quickly and, and make the decision. So that's what I'm, and then we have to decide as a board, how do we wanna, how do we, do we wanna combine things together? Do we wanna do two separate ones? Do we wanna put 'em all together, et cetera? Um, I've heard over the last week or two that, um, you know, for example, you know, maybe there's a, a new firehouse that wants to be built or needs to be built. You know, is that a need or a, I don't know, right? But there's a lot of things that are coming out of the woodwork because we have a referendum that's almost ready to hit now.
Right.
And others are going, gosh, maybe we need to get something out there, too. So, so I think we should do that very quickly, whatever it takes.
To your, to your point, Mike, I, I think we need clarity of exactly what we're gonna do. We're gonna meet with, with, looking at the calendar, the reality of, of the number of meetings we have, um, between now and, you know, with, between now and when we have to, we have our drop dead deadline, and we don't have that many meetings. So, uh, we're gonna have to lay out either special meetings or, um, if you wanna do this, special meetings or-
Would this board feel comfortable setting up a special meeting today? Pick a date today that we can meet?
I, I think, if we don't do something, it's, I mean, gonna be banging our head against the wall.
Well, our next, our next regularly scheduled meeting is June one. Um, I do know that, um, availability will not be until after June one, because I think we need to have a couple of parks here. I know, but we, we, not before June one. So-
How about next week? Next Wednesday?
Again, this was gonna be a report you had January first, two thousand and sixteen.
All right, let's look at the following week, Mike. I don't know what, if Wednesdays are the best night for this.
I'm open to whatever, whatever came.
Okay. Eight.
Is that the last day of school?
Nine is, um-
The kids graduate the ten.
Uh, nine.
Nine, ten, nine?
Ten is the last day.
For the teachers?
They graduate the nine?
The eight.
Senior graduate in the ninth in the junior class.
The eight, sure. That'll give us maybe three weeks or whatever to kinda get other stuff together. Uh, Rick, does that give you enough time to kind of refine and relook at what you need to do?
Yeah, I can say, yeah, that's what you ought to do.
Susan, when you-
Yes.
I'm sorry. When you, um, we're thinking about this in, in assigning tasks, um, did you have a number in your head for a bond in November, or multiples?
Well, the, the park question is five and a half.
Yeah.
And, um, in just some casual conversations, it appears that like a total of ten million is something that is-
That's what it looks like.
Yeah. And that doesn't include five and ten years out.
So our next regular board meeting is June first.
Yes, we can start talking then.
We can start talking there, maybe whatever prelimin-
I will be away from three o'clock this morning until May thirty, so I'll, I'll be there. We don't have any new information.
Well, you have a lot of information.
Maybe we can wrap this up.
All right. We'll start then, and then we'll schedule one for the eight.
Seven thirty.
Seven thirty?
Yeah.
Thank you, Mike.
Welcome.
Special.
June one may be difficult for me, though.
Eight is probably better than-
That's how I think, so.
Seven. Thank you very much. And I do not have anything under number twelve. So I would entertain a motion to go to executive session for the purpose of negotiations of the Brownstone Exploration and Discovery Park contract, and, um, it is only us. There's no invited guests. So we'll, uh, take a brief recess.
Right.